With liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could remain standing for one moment to observe a moment of silence in honor of the troops who are serving overseas and around the world, as well as those troops who have lost their lives in defense of our freedoms. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 2013 Village Board Meeting. Before I start, there is an award that I am privileged to present, so I'm going to go up to the podium. So one of the things that we have privilege to have in this village, we have a recycling committee, which also has gone by the name, different moniker, is the Green Committee. And what we do is we announce the, we're announcing the winner of our annual Best Christmas Display, oh, sorry, here tonight. It's a volunteer board that I, is this my phone? What's going on here? Sorry. Interrupt myself. So this, so the Green Committee focuses on various things, including village beautification. So each year, the committee presents three awards to homeowners in the village. We have the Best Halloween Display, the Best Christmas Display, and in the spring, we have the Green Thumb Award, which honors the homeowner with the best display of flowers. So it is my honor here tonight to announce the winner and the runner-up of the Best Christmas Decorations. First, I'll present the runner-up for the Village of Suffolk, 2012 Best Christmas Decorations Award goes to Stephanie Alfieri at 10 Cross Street. Stephanie is unable to be with her this evening. She's on set, but we have her via satellite. Come on, yeah, see, thank, Charles appreciates my joke, but I accept it on her behalf. And now we have, for the winner, I'd like to call up the winner, who will get a certificate and also a seventy, sorry, $75 gift certificate to Danina, Mary Ann Kilbasa of 24 Interstate Street. all your hard work. We appreciate it. Also done great work in terms of Arbor Day celebration, planting trees, and other efforts to promote a green environment here in the Village of Suffolk. Thank you. Okay. So we have the dates for the March meetings. Workshop Thursday, we do it again on Thursday due to, I guess, scheduling conflicts with some board members, or think it may have been me. Thursday, February 28th at 7:00 PM. And the board meeting will be the following Monday, March 4th at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is the Fire Department, Chief Mike Stark.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have two items on the agenda tonight. There are two new members. The first one is for the Hook and Ladder, Thomas Fahey, and the second one is from the Host Company, Andrew Markounis. I'd like the Board to approve them, please.
Second.
And just a quick update, there's a few things that aren't on here. The LoSAP for 2012 is...
What? Oh, did we vote? We didn't vote.
I'm sorry.
No, we said first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we voted.
The 2012 LoSAP is in the preliminary stages of being completed, and I should have it to you probably next month for board approval. And I also attended a meeting with Deputy Mayor Corrigan for the Rockland County P-25 radio upgrade, and hopefully it won't cost the village any money for the Fire Department this year, which is a good thing, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Wow, look at that. Impressive. Culture and Recreation, Gail.
No, I didn't put it on because I wasn't sure.
Yeah, what's...
You can put it on the, you can put it on the air.
What's the name? What's the name?
Good evening.
Do I know what's your name? I'll let Gail do that. You want to suggest the appointment, and then I'll...
Oh, sure. Shall I pretend to be you for a moment?
Sorry?
Shall I pretend to be you for a moment?
Sure.
Okay. As mayor, you have the opportunity to appoint members to the Advisory Board on Culture and Recreation. They are, as far as I know, all these years, your appointment only, and based on that authority, you are appointing Darlene Rock as the newest member to the Advisory Board on Culture and Recreation.
Okay. I will, so Darlene Rock is appointed to the board. I don't need a motion for confirmation, right? Okay.
Done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The update from Recreation tonight includes, since your last meeting, we did another Cub Scout tour at Village Hall on January 10th, we had Lead on January 11th, Farmer's Market on January 12th, fundraiser for a village resident, Danny Van Sheik, on January 21, Farmer's Market again on January 26, Senior Movie Afternoon on January 31, and this past Friday night, we had Lead. Upcoming, starting tomorrow through April 9th, each Tuesday, AARP will be available for tax service at the Leo P. Leiden Community Building from 10 to 2. Dare Dance Friday, February 8th, Farmer's Market February 9th, Farmer's Market February 23rd, Senior Movie Afternoon February 28th, and Lead again on March 1st. I would also like to propose the following dates on behalf of the Advisory Board on Culture and Recreation for your special events in 2013. The Egg Hunt, Saturday, March 23rd, Movie Under the Stars in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, Saturday, May 25th, Fishing Derby in conjunction with the Mawa Elks Lodge, Saturday, June 22nd, Family Day, Sunday, July 14th, Rain Date, Sunday, July 21st, Clifford Theatre Production, Friday and Saturday, August 2nd and 3rd, Senior Citizen Picnic, Thursday, August 29th, Suffolk Day, Saturday, September 28th, Rain Date, Sunday, September 29th, Window Painting in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, Saturday, October 19th, Halloween Parade, Sunday, October 27, and Christmas Tree Lighting, Thursday, December 5th. In addition, concerts on Wednesday, June 26th, Thursday, July 11th, Thursday, July 25th, Monday, July 29th, and Thursday, August 8th. I'd like authorization for Lou Ciaccio to be recertified as a certified pool operator. This is a position that is required by the Health Department, and Lou has held his position since he came on board a few years ago. The course that he will be taking is on Saturday and Sunday, April 13th and 14th, for a total of $305 plus mileage to Saddle Brook, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
That's it.
Thank you, Gail. Grant Rider, Mr. Fred Rella.
Last week, we submitted the Community Development Block Grant for 2013 to the Office of Community Development. As you know, it was for $100,000 to continue the facade program downtown. We should be hearing about that in March, and if I find out anything sooner, I'll let you know. Member items, those are items which are elected officials, such as Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe, or Assemblywoman Annie Rabbit, or Senator Carlucci, are given monies out of the state budget, which they can allocate to different municipalities for different activities. And for the past two to three years, member items have not been in the state budget. And we don't know if they're going to be in the state budget in 2013. The executive budget was submitted last week to both the Assembly and the Senate, and they convene, and they go back and forth, and then on April 1, magically, they're supposed to produce a budget for the state. But usually, member items are an item which falls in at the very end as a negotiating type of tool, so we really don't know if they're going to be in the budget until on or about when that final budget is derived, okay, up and over the name. However, in anticipation and positive thinking that member items are going to be available, I've submitted applications because Assemblywoman Jaffe and Assemblywoman Rabbit wanted us to let them know what we were looking for. And so specifically, submitted for the Clifford Theatre, $3,000 to Assemblywoman Jaffe, and $3,000 for the Dare Program, and then with Annie Rabbit, $5,000 for Suffolk Day, and for Suffolk Seniors, $3,000. Okay? So...
What about the code online that we talked about?
Oh, well, I'm still waiting to hear back from Senator Carlucci.
Okay.
So I was thinking that would be something that he might want to do.
We can get 10 years of payments, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, the Building Department, we have here a request to attend Building Officials Conference, April 30th to May 2nd, three days. Randy Ortiz, Code Enforcer, Frank Wilson, Fire Inspector, Mike Stark, Code Enforcer, and Joe Tishner, Building Inspector, for a total of $1,100.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Village Attorney.
Just a few quick things. We spoke the other night about appraisal for the portion of Pleasant Avenue that the village is considering surplusing. We have a proposal from James Molinaro for $1,450 to do the appraisal.
And that will be reimbursed by the applicant, correct?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Right, secondly, the mayor had proposed a sliding scale on the recreation fees, and I've spoken to our planner, he's working on it, and assuming he'll have a proposal sufficiently in advance of that, we can set a public hearing for March 4th on that proposal.
If you look at this year, we're going to wait a long time. 21,013.
So moved to set the public hearing on March 4th.
See that date? Buck Rogers will be back...
7:40.
2013. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What time was it?
7:40. Motion is carried.
You threw me when you said 21:40.
Sorry.
And then lastly, the Code Enforcement Office has suggested a couple of changes to our tree removal law, and we're going through the revisions on that, so again, a public hearing for 7:45 on that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Chief Osborne.
Just some information, items for you, nothing to vote on tonight. In January, we had 40 arrests. A bit of busy month, we had accident recall wise also, call volume was up. Our Explorer Program, which you know we talked about the other day, which is our high school students who live here in the village, Suffolk high school students, we also have, I think, a few that attend parochial schools that live here in the village as well, that are in our Explorer Program. They're going to be competing in an accident report competition with several police departments throughout the region, including NYPD. That'll be run by Detective Qualley, they're competing, I believe, within the next few weeks in that. We have an internship program, we have a village resident college student, this will be our second time we'll have an intern, we just started that. That's going very well, we'll be starting that probably next month as well. And I know we discussed pretty much at length, but just for you know, the public to hear, we're working very heavily on school safety plans, building safety plans. We have Detective Fantasy in our schools right now, he's been taking photos, updating our emergency plans with BOCs, who has all these safety and crisis plans. That's going very well. We met with school officials to get this going. We attended an active shooter drill in Clarkstown last week to work with them. Tonight, and I believe for the next, we have five different dates after today, we're training every officer in a crisis intervention active shooter drill with the Ramapo Police. Tonight, we're in a Suffolk middle school, we have a team of officers, every officer's going to go a different night together, so, because in reality, when something happens, we're all going to respond to the same incident, whether it's their schools or ours. Sacred Heart faculty, I met with them last Friday, did a safety briefing with them, we've got action plans with them. We also were able to receive $28,000 in seizure funding from the County of Rockland. That's going to be for a live scan automated fingerprint upgrade, as well as we're going to wire and audio and interview and interrogation room, and that's not going to cost the village residents anything, that's from seizure money. We also just reminded, we received about $60,000 I had applied for, from the Police Chiefs Association, which Chairman, immediate past president, we received $60,000 to buy two plate readers, as well as two pole cams, which we call, which are surveillance equipment. So we've done very well this year with seizure money, and we should have that very soon. And last but not least, in May, we already spoke about this, while Colonel Grossman, who was a US Army expert retired on school violence, mass shootings, prevention and action plans, will be coming to the Lafayette Theater on behalf of the Police Chiefs of Rockland County. We have him coming in, we're paying the expenses to bring him in, and we'll probably have several hundred, hopefully close to 1,000 people in the theater on that day. And the advantage for the villages, it'll be officers and school officials from all over the region, and that's good for the village, because we're going to encourage them to shop and eat in a downtown village for lunch. So I'll try to contact the local restaurants to get a menu, whatever we can do, so it's a win-win for us. So, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, audience participation, if anybody would like to come up and have a public comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Come on.
Wow.
It's a first.
It's a first.
Fine, we'll move right along.
It's a new trend.
Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Requesting authorization for Mr. Steve Cottier to attend the 2B Water Operator Certified Course offered by the New York State Department of Health. This course is located in Tonawanda, New York, and is scheduled from April 29th through May 3rd. The total cost is approximately $1,650.
So moved.
Second.
All in fa, uh, sorry, we need a roll call. Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Requesting authorization for Mr. Albert Chamberlain to attend the 2B Water Operator Certified Lab Course offered by the New York Rural Water Association. This course is located in Calverneck, New York, and is scheduled for April 4th, 2013. Total cost is $75.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried. Chair, I have a question, like, is there like an amount that we could have where we don't need?
I suppose we could probably adopt a local law to that effect.
I was wondering, like, at $75 to have to bring...
Well, generally, the, generally, it's required for anything outside of the county that you would have to do that.
Oh, at a county, okay, just wondering. Okay, fair enough.
I am requesting authorization to attend the Applied Green Infrastructure Design Course offered by Cornell Cooperative Extension in Middletown, New York on February 6th, 2013. The total cost of this course is $225.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Requesting authorization to schedule an educational field trip to the water treatment facility on February 19th, 2013, by the Rockland County College Science Department.
Euro collage.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
College or collage? I move it.
Sorry, having fun. What? I, whatever, I'm having a good time. You can enjoy it. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Requesting authorization for payment of application for payment number two, which is the final payment, to Mont Pat Construction, Inc. This payment is for the DPW Street Garage Roof Restoration Project in the amount of $5,657.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
I'm going to ask the mayor to appoint three employees. Mr. John Conklin for permanent assistant operator at the Water Department. Salary will be $69,349.49.
And before we vote on this, I'd like to say these are all positions that are currently in the budget.
Right.
Currently filled, it's just a question of appointing them to a permanent position based on the civil, the test's civil service requirements.
That's correct.
Motion to confirm. Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Mayor to appoint Donald Toscano Jr. as permanent chief operator, grade 4A at the wastewater treatment plant, salary's $93,490.75.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried. Change it up a little there.
Don't confuse me. Don't confuse me. I know when to say yes.
Mayor to appoint Nicholas Fabicatori as permanent assistant operator, grade 3A. Wastewater Treatment Plant, salary $81,369.60.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you, and I just have to say that, you know, obviously, I know that, you know, Johnny does a lot, and has been with the village a long time, and really is a jack of all trades, and you know, it's good that he's, you know, moving up and getting his license to help us at the water plant. Really, the wastewater treatment facility was something which, I guess, stood out like a sore thumb in an otherwise, otherwise kind of amazing Department of Public Works of top-notch facilities, and we decided, this administration, three years ago, that we were going to invest $3 million in, you know, really restoring the sewer plant so it would function properly and meet DEC standards, and as part of that, we also felt that it was prudent that if we were going to take this kind of money and invest taxpayer funds into this, that we would ensure that the investment would be protected, and that we wouldn't see the plant really fall in disrepair again. And we brought in a, really, a whole new set of personnel, and these two gentlemen are here today, and we appreciate your hard work, and not only have they done a good job in terms of making sure the plant functions properly, but they've also created efficiencies in how we operate, where we were able to significantly reduce our energy costs. So again, that's something which our residents will realize a significant saving, so I thank you for your hard work, and you know, I know that there's some more work to be done, but I want you to know, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Village Clerk.
We have the approval of the board meeting of January the 7th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Also, we have a letter of request from the judge to send Chris Anderson and Anne Russo to a session in New York, and the cost will be $415. This is a training seminar, Mayor.
465.
So moved. Second at 465.
Okay. Mr. Falsiglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Abado.
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Mian.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
And next, we had a request to make no parking a little bit further down on Riverside Drive because of some confusion there, so we have to set a public hearing for March the 4th.
I know the chief, we discussed this at the workshop, it was an issue of visibility and safety, so the chief looked at it and recommended that the board move forward, so there's a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
750 or 7, yes, 750.
750. 750.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Trese. Okay, thank you. Okay. Sacred Heart is having its festival again this year, and the date is going to be April the 11th, the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th, and they will make sure that all the permits are in at that time.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay. We have our first application for tables and chairs, which is from Shamrock. They want approval for 10 tables and chairs.
When is the time? I thought we usually...
We don't have any in the code.
I thought it was through October, not the start time, the end time, right? Is the end?
Yeah, usually, it's the condition they make.
Okay, but they can start immediately, because I know I'm sure this is...
Yeah, there's no permission.
Got it.
They asked if they could have until December the 1st, and what they, do you want it to stop?
I don't think we have a problem with that, right? Why would there be a reason?
There isn't, it's just...
Well, because in their situation, they own that property in front, so it's not, typically, we do it because of the snow removal and who would be out, but I don't see why there's a reason why they can't have it till that date, right? Anyone have a problem with that?
Nope. Make a motion to sit outside.
Okay. So immediately through December 1st?
Right.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Virginia. Mr. Zordan.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to say that the budget process, as detailed online, is moving along, and I will have the budget for the mayor on Friday.
Excellent. And then, as we discussed at the workshop, the process after that, as everyone knows, we have the, the budget timeline for the last three years been posted online, which spells out in great detail how exactly the process moves along. The worksheets are presented to the various department heads, they prepare their budgets, they give it back to Tom, he puts a red line through everything, and then we enter the data, and there's a preliminary budget that is then presented to me. The Treasurer and I sit down individually with all the department heads, we go through the budgets, then it's again revised, and then at that point, we present the budget again revised, and then at that point, we present the budget to the Board of Trustees, who goes through the same process that I did in meeting with each individual department head to discuss the budgets. And then once they do that, and that's complete, then we once again revise the budget. At that point, we will post it online. The public will have the opportunity to comment, make suggestions, and then we will have a public hearing, which again, will offer people the opportunity to have comments and make suggestions to the budget. And we change that, whereas in the past, we would have the public hearing and vote on the budget the same night. It kind of rendered whatever suggestion and comments the public made is really moot, because if we're voting on it that night, it doesn't make sense. So this way, there's a lot of time between the public hearing and us ultimately voting on the budget. So the process is moving along, and what's the date? Do you know off the top when we're going to have it online?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Probably about three weeks from now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, about three weeks. Now, towards the end of the month, it'll be online, the preliminary budget, so. Good job, Tom.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, trustees. Mr. Mian?
Yeah, on, at the meeting Thursday night, the Board had a discussion about looking, with the help of the Village Treasurer, looking into the parking authority, and I know that, and the discussion was that Charles Falsigliya and I would do that, working with Tom, and I just wanted, you know, to keep it on the agenda and announce, you know, that sort of agreement that we had, and I'm looking forward to looking into that. So that's all I have to say on that.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. We will move forward with that as discussed. Okay, I have one item on the agenda. It's Resolution Number 6, apprenticeship program. How do we want to... Do I read it, or just...
No, it's too long to read.
Okay. What this concerns is regarding certain public work projects in excess of $250,000. This is a discussion the Board had while certain state contracts require prevailing wage. We felt it was appropriate to try to focus, when available, to use local labor, and one such way of doing that is to adopt apprenticeship program, which means that whatever contract you select has a program in place regarding apprenticeship. So this is something we've done. We've discussed in the Board. I don't know if anyone wants to comment or say anything, but presuming this is passed, this will be posted online. Kathy, can we make sure this is posted online?
Yeah.
And available. So I don't know if anyone has any questions concerning that?
Nope.
The language is what obtained from the state, right, also the county and other various entities modeling similar programs in other municipalities.
More or less.
Exactly. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, do I do a roll call? Okay, Mr. Falsigliya?
Yes.
Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried. Before we adjourn, are there any other matters for anybody? What I would like to do is adjourn this meeting with the thoughts of a local boy who is not a Village Resident, but a local Suffolk resident, Ben Lipton, who suffered a terrible accident while skiing two weekends ago, a severe head injury. And I know that the community, many friends, Village residents here, there was a prayer group in support of Ben last Thursday at the Montebell Community Center, and I saw really just many, many Village residents who were there. So it's obviously where a close knit community, and even though someone may not reside right in the Village, it's still the larger Suffolk community. So I would like to adjourn the meeting in prayers and hopes that Ben makes a speedy recovery.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried.
Yeah, I'm scared.